And I would like to begin this public hearing with the traditional Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First order of business is to adopt the ordinance establishing the general assistance program. And I'm embarrassed to admit this, but I don't really recall a whole lot about this, but this is the schedule of expenses that are an income that is allowable by the general for the general assistance and that we must do this or else our citizens are not entitled to any help. Just a note that the minimum, maximum income of a one-person household to receive general assistance in Saginaw County is $969. So if you're over that, there is no help. For a family of, a household of five, the maximum income is $2,335.
What is the time frame for that?
A year.
That happens something for a year?
Per year?
That can't be. I would say monthly.
Yes, probably monthly.
And it's reimbursed? The state reimburses our general assistance?
Right. It's reimbursable and very necessary. You can see that the income levels are not outrageously generous. So I would entertain a motion to adopt the...
I move that we accept the general assistance program as presented.
Any further discussion? Any comments from the public? All in favor? The motion carries.
And we're supposed to sign this.
Needs to have signatures.
That's an easy...
And his third?
Turn three. It's only IC, I swear. Blueberry IC, that was good.
Motion to close the hearing.
I move to close the hearing.
Second. All in favor? Before we begin our meeting as the Board of Assessors, I would like to request that we have a moment of silence honoring the memory of Steve Kehlisch, a dedicated public citizen and public servant who recently died. His service will be the 26th of October at 11 o'clock at the Phippsburg Church in the Center.
He put what's a child's name that passed by in the hill.
Evan Briggs.
I'd also like to move the number of silence for Evan Briggs.
Thank you.
Let's deal with the...
Can I just say that Evan's father, Nate Briggs, is a member of our school board?
Yes. Could we just deal with the consent agenda now?
Yeah.
I move that we accept the consent agenda as presented. Second? Any discussion? All in favor? And the next Select Board meeting will be October 17th at 5:30 at the Town Hall. And so with that, meeting as the Board of Assessors, we have a list of abatements.
Would you like me to read them?
Yes, please.
We have 27 abatements, all of which are based upon a home set exemption being overlooked in the entire file folder. The abatement value is $205, based upon our mill rate on a $25,000 home set exemption. We're going to, instead of reading all of that data, since it's the exact same abatement value, we're going to read the abatement numbers. Is it that and the address or does it even number?
Oh, just the number, I think.
So we're going to do, it's abatement 24-001, 24-002, 24-003, 24-004, 24-005, 24-006, 24-007, 24-008, 24-009, 24-010, 24-011, 24-012, 24-013, 24-014, 24-015, 24-016, 24-017, 24-018, 24-019, 24-020, 24-021, 24-022, 24-023, 24-024, 24-025, 24-026, and 24-027. Again, 27 abatements at a value of $205.
The total abatement being voted on is $5,535 in total.
I move that we accept them as presented.
Second. And just a comment that if anybody is curious about who is receiving these, this is a matter of public record and you can ask for those at the Town Hall.
When are these people going to be notified? How?
I don't know if they already have been or not. That I don't know. I know this is a folder that was discovered, that they had already applied for it.
Yeah, I know that. I just was, I've had somebody ask me, would they find out about it? And I just wondered if they would be individually notified from the town office or just whatever.
I don't have an answer to that, but everybody certainly will be notified.
Okay, thank you.
Probably when they come and get paid.
When they get their check. Well, they already paid, they're going to get a $205 check in the mail.
Well, I'm just asking, particularly for someone who is visually impaired and mobility impaired, they don't get their mail out of their mailbox, but everyone's a lot...
Right. I was in the Town Hall today when someone went to pay their taxes, their name was on this list, and the $205, I think, was adjusted accordingly.
And if somebody has already paid their taxes, they'll get it back. They'll get it. But the check will be in the mail probably with the next, on the 17th. Let's see. Board of Assessors, we've taken care of that. All business. We did not set the date for the Town Business Calendar officially because you were not here and we needed to know whether or not you would be available on Monday.
I cannot do this Monday.
You can't?
No, we're no longer available on that Monday either.
Oh, well then, never mind. So is there another date?
I cannot do any dates this week coming week.
Next week is book fully, so the following week, or if it works better for the three of you, we're happy to put together a list of dates, school-specific dates, and give them for inclusion.
Would it be beneficial to do it as a workshop before or after our meeting on the 17th?
I think I can do there, I'm not sure.
Do you want to tentatively plan that?
Yeah, let's do that.
And you're looking for budget-specific dates or important dates?
Anything that's going to mean that we need to have cooperation and communication between the school office and the town office so that things work more smoothly. I know aiming on toward perfection.
I know we were looking for, we weren't expecting the amount of financial requests earlier, as early in the year as we received from, just money's necessary for the school. We actually had to take a tan to cover those expenses. So I think the goal for, I know on behalf of Julie, is to get a quarterly budget a month in advance of the quarter at a minimum so that we can adjust for that, so that we just know what's coming out us financially.
I understand, though I will say the early expenditures were no different than they've been the last.
Well, and it was coming off of a revow that was late getting committed.
But I guess one thing is we have decade of trend data that we should be able to, you know, project cash flow for you.
But just so that we could, she can see it coming, if we have to move money around, we can do that.
We're not disagreeing. We're saying the same thing.
It's kind of like, after 10, 10 years, says it, since... It's time we figured out so that the left hand or the east end knows what the west end is doing, something along that better communication that you were talking about.
So how much time do you think we need for this?
I...
30 minutes?
It... 45? Can you be there?
I'm just trying to think if we wanted to schedule, if we say the workshop starts at 5:30, the meeting then starts at 6 or 6:15, so that you do one to the next.
I can make that work.
Okay.
I don't think it's going to take long for months.
Okay. I don't think it's going to take, I think 30 minutes is probably sufficient.
Yeah.
So why don't we say 5:30? 5:30 workshop, 6 o'clock meeting.
So the upcoming Select Board meeting will be at 6 o'clock on the 17th.
Preceding the workshop.
Preceding?
No.
Follow.
Following. I swear it, I say.
Okay. Take a taste. Yes, sir.
Point of agenda order.
Yes.
Do you have the Investment Committee on your agenda?
Yes, yes, we have your...
You're in new business.
I'm in the new business, yes. That's right.
Well, you may be kind of old hat, but you're new business.
Thank you.
Do we have other old business? Okay. So on to new business, the Winter Town Parking Lot Bid Opening.
And I will apologize for that snafu last meeting. I had the uncle that should have been open.
Okay. So we know what the bid was. This is the bid that we opened from Mark Travis at $15,000. This bid was also submitted according to the ad. We have Reno's explanation, and their bid is for $17,000 for the first year, $17,850 for the second, and $18,742 for the third year. They have a list of their equipment, which to do this work, so they are sufficiently equipped.
This has a list of equipment as well.
The Travis bid is for $15,000 for all three years. Correct. Total of 45 versus a total of 53, $592. Any discussion or motion?
I am concerned that I'm going to recluse myself from voting, but I am also for conflict or what may appear as conflict of interest. But I also say we don't do a very good job of reading those over, we don't look at the equipment, we don't look at each one's providing, we don't really see what services we're getting, we're just going through all of it.
Do you check the insurance following this?
We'll get it. I don't even know if we asked for that when we used to ask him for that.
Yes.
Do we have certain requirements for equipment they need?
I don't know what's a bid, unfortunately, I don't know what's a bid.
It was specified.
It was specified in the bid. So I presume that these have met the...
That's what gets us in trouble.
Right. I don't have that in front of me.
Should you table the decision until you've investigated that for the next meeting?
We could do.
And so we invent, to make sure they met the bid specifications?
Yes.
I'm fine with that.
You're thinking it, go ahead and say it.
So I'm also concerned. I'm concerned because last meeting you voted to award a contract, and now we appear to be in some state of window. Both contractors are known in town, both provide a quality service, both have filed on the counts to happen in the past. Winter's coming, and they need to know if they won the bid or not and prepare for that. It's also an impactful thing for the school budget, we've had a lot of discussion about the school budget. We need to know rather the amount of money we budget is sufficient to pay for planning this year or if it's not.
Are you in this contract?
We were not consulted about it, but reading the bid specs, yes, we are included in that. Mark has filed our parking lot for a...
So do we bill them back for a piece of this?
Yes. Which also isn't spelled out in your bid specs, how that are impacting electricity and your power. So I'm not sure, what methodology would you use to make that consideration?
Yes, I...
In my understanding, we were supposed to have a discussion with the school before we put this up. So I don't know what you do now.
I'm just saying. So I, I think, I believe the attorney said if this, based upon it being open at last meeting, if this was the lowest bid, I thought we had to accept it.
Yeah.
So I think we can follow our legal advice.
I think because that was open, did you put the price out last time?
Yes.
Yeah, it was, it reaches there, and I was just looking at the switch.
You don't have to accept the lowest bid, I do know that.
No, the attorney's based upon what happened.
Oh, but I think either way, we could be in trouble legally. But I'm not going to vote.
I'm comfortable with the lower bid as...
As the lowest bid?
Yeah.
I move that we accept the lowest bid as presented.
I do know that we had a great deal of conversation about the specifications of the bid package, so...
I believe it, I believe they wouldn't be in here if they didn't meet the, I mean, I don't have it in front of me, certainly if they...
If they...
How about, I move that we accept the lowest bid as presented, presuming it meets the specifications of the bid. We have a question.
Any further discussion? Yes?
So according to the attorney, it is noted for discussion, then you just have to accept the lowest bidder, is that what we're doing here?
Well, I think it needs to be because we accept the lowest bid, but they have to go on making sure that they have what was requested in the bid that they put out.
And I, unfortunately, that we should certainly path forward, anytime we open a bid, we should have the bid in front of us. Always learning. That helps us. And we also hope we had a town administrator to help us along with this, too.
Well, I'm not sure we...
Have ever done that.
Right.
But it's not a bad idea to do that path forward.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think we, I think Susan, Suzanne's right, we've never made sure that, because there's always been questions halfway through the contract.
Do they have insurance? Do they have, have they filed a bid?
Well, do they have the equipment to, I know there's a big question with the roads, the roads didn't get filed accurately, and the big thing that came up was, well, they don't even have this piece of equipment that is demanded in the contract.
Yeah, we do have the listed equipment, we got that, we got that approved anyway.
And they both, yeah. So it's, I think we should follow our attorney's recommendation with the caveat that it meets the bid specifications, and if it does not, we will then, I believe she said we would go back out to bid again.
Right.
With a very short bid timeframe.
Kate?
I don't want to belabor the point, but last meeting, the Board voted to award a bid.
And that's who it's getting going to.
And now you're saying it will be awarded if they meet it twice. So I think you may want to add some might to that motion that provokes the action we had last meeting, if you're intending to verify bids.
Yes.
So I'll change my motion to, I move that we accept the bid as presented as the lowest bid and revoke the previous acceptance, presuming that this bid meets the specification of the bid request.
You got that?
You get that, Tracy? And the recording? Okay. All right. Ready, what, you second that?
I, oh, I need to second this. I will second that. Thank you. Now I'll give them up. All in favor? Okay. Motion carries.
Did you notify the person who didn't get the...
Yes.
Got it correct?
Yes. That will be done, thank you. The Investment Committee recommendation, please.
Yes, so we had, we had a note maturity, and we're here tonight to recommend its replacement. So we want to recommend a U.S. Treasury note of May 31st, '25 to replace it, that's eight months, that interest rate is four and one quarter percent, and we want, we would recommend $125,000 based value placed in that.
That's four and a quarter?
Four and a quarter of 53125.
Is there any further discussion?
Can you state your name? I'm sorry.
Paul Coombs, I'm the chairman of the Investment Committee.
So that seems, Paul, to be better than our previous...
Pardon?
Is that better than our previous one?
The previous rate? The rate on the previous one? I think it's about the same.
It's about the same.
So before, well, are we, I want to...
One other thing.
And I want to talk to you on a different topic, but yes.
Okay, the fixed value of the, the total market value of the fund at this point is about $688,000.
So, and this comes to, okay, 53125. So when we had, I think you spoke with Julie a little bit about the tan and maybe making sure that we have funds available should we get into this predicament next fall. Are we timing things or do we have, so that we don't have to go to have a special meeting to approve that? What should we be doing to preface that need, should we have it?
Right. Well, the money market fund has, even after this purchase, will have about $135,000 in it, and then we also have maturity in January of $125,000. So, and then this note is timed to mature at the end of May.
Next month.
So there's $375,000 around the end of the fiscal year.
Yeah.
So there's plenty of liquidity with the idea of avoiding the anticipation of, not that she paid much interest, but...
No, and we only, we took out 300, and I think we only used 150 or 135 or something. So we...
And she paid that out?
Yeah, we had like $1,300 in interest or something.
But still...
Yeah, it's just a thought.
We could have avoided that $1,300.
I know.
Right, we just didn't know that at all. We had no idea about that before yet.
Well, and if we go to commitment in August versus October, you're not in that situation anymore either.
Right.
So and I think we're on track to do that with what we've, you know, the policies and procedures that we're putting in place shouldn't be an issue.
Right.
But I was just trying, I was trying to...
It was just a surprise this year.
Yeah.
You know, the communication hasn't been great around Town Hall, I mean, at least in terms of what the administrator is doing or not doing.
But we have a motion.
So I move that we accept their proposal of reinvesting $125,000 bond for four and quarter percent maturing on May 31st of 2025, or it's in 1925.
Should we authorize Julie to make the transfer?
Yeah. Yeah, I authorized Julie, and to authorize Julie to make the transfer.
Right, exactly. Should I give you this or give this to...
Do we have to sign it?
No, I think so. All you have to do is vote.
This is stuff that's gone down to Julie.
We have to sign all of these now?
Yeah. All in favor? We voted on the ordinance, didn't we?
We did. We're ahead of the game.
Okay. Do we have other new business?
I just want to raise your awareness that we have discussed a third person being appointed to the Investment Committee. That's your decision obviously to make, but we're prepared to, in short time, offer up the name that we think might work well, and just, that's just for your information.
I think that's terrific that we have it, we've got opening, other openings, I think we should...
It should be announced.
Announce the openings?
Yes.
Because I know that the planning board's looking, we need to figure out who needs what. Do you want just one more, do you want more than one, just one more? But we should, we should, because I know there's only three on the planning board, so we should put some, some thought into that, post it, send an email, then you send it to the committee and let them come in and see what opportunities they are certainly get involved. So we'll take the name also, though. Following up on that.
Well, we talked, the two of us talked about it and with Jules, and we're going to approach somebody and ask them that they would respond to the request for volunteers to be considered.
And if you guys know of any people who want to participate... And if you guys don't have any people who want to participate in the planning board, we only have three of the five and one of the two alternates. So, we certainly have it open there.
We are at public comment. Public.
We have no microphones tonight. I understand there's a necessity for some equipment to supplement what we have.
We have actually three microphones, no cables and no speaker.
Right, so is there action?
No amplifier.
Yeah, is there action to secure that equipment before another meeting?
Yes, we can, we can start looking into it for the, and see what the costs are.
Okay, that would be much appreciated.
Yes. I am equally disappointed that we did not have that.
We had the microphones.
You know, I, you took a supposal into it. You were finding microphones downstairs closet and Jules told me that there's microphones upstairs.
No, it wasn't, it wasn't microphones. We have six brand-new backup batteries for computers downstairs, still in their box.
Okay.
Three microphones upstairs.
Okay.
No cables. An apertite and a pertry. I mean, I don't, there's, weird. A ton of, we should go, spend some time to go through the closet off of the meeting room. There is a significant amount of equipment in there that...
Sounds like a workshop that could be done before the end of the year. Yeah, we don't, I'm just asking. We don't take serial numbers off the stuff we have in inventory, what we have as talent?
That wouldn't be a bad thing to do.
So, and will we get rid of a piece of equipment, taking off the list?
There's gotta be ten monitors. Some of them are double monitors. I'm not sure what.
I just think for insurance purposes, I mean...
Yeah. Maybe somewhere, but I have no idea where it is.
Julie may know that, though, actually.
So, maybe that's a good thing for the new town administrator to...
They're not gonna have enough to do.
Well, you know what? I do it for the little bit of work that I do. I mean, you've gotta somehow record what you have for...
Inventory.
Inventory. It's just like when we go and ask the businesses, you know, for their taxes, yeah.
And if we're not gonna use it and the monitors still work, we should donate them to the school. I mean, there's stuff that we can do that could... I think the monitors work. I mean, they're...
They're booked to bid. They're booked to bid.
There's...
Right.
I frankly was surprised to see that there was stuff in that closet because there hadn't been the last time.
A lot of stuff.
I'll be over there.
Move, yes, we'll cross that bridge.
All right. So, we had also talked about future agenda items and one of them is to adopt the, a new, not a current, town administrative job description. And Juanita's not here to discuss the state valuation, but it seems to me that on the October seventeenth meeting, it would be very helpful to discuss the report of the audit so that people understand that and what the complications of that are going forward. And then, and to add to that agenda, it would be to adopt at that time the town administrator's job description after tonight's session.
I just want to ask too, because of what we just went through with the new town administrator's job descriptions, there were some things that weren't done, like reports that were supposed to be presented to the state by November. Do we have a list of...
What's due when?
Yeah.
You know who will know that is Josh. He's actually working on the MVR, which is due November first. I talked to him this morning about it. That will be filed on time.
They, it's hard to hold people accountable if we don't have...
Right. Part of, part of what we can do when we do the calendar workshop is to, is to talk about those things and if we, what the specifics of the expectation of when the reports are due and that kind of stuff.
Right, because it would have been nice if we had...
We knew we were missing something.
Right, and then we could say, has this been sent? Can we have a copy of it so we don't miss those deadlines and end up being fined?
We had a penalty for one of them.
Right, that was, right.
So, I can, I can reach out to Josh and ask him to, because he knows what to do when. At least give us a list of financial assessing reports.
Right.
That would be helpful.
And I'm sure other municipalities probably have something like that. So, even if we were to borrow something and compare it to...
David...
Well, neither one even had it.
Right. They haven't said that back in the olden days when he was on the board. That's what they did.
I'm sure. And with our technology, we should have it somewhere in a database with dates, time.
We could do that. Before we start talking about the proposed town administrator job description and accountability and how to ensure that as part of the contract, any select board comments, announcements, et cetera, et cetera.
I do not have any.
And you're all set? Okay, so, let's officially adjourn so that we can just work as a workshop on the proposed job description, see what we have and what we would like to add to. There are some copies down on the other end of the materials that I brought the other, the other day, two weeks ago.
Does anyone want any or do you have them?
I have them.
I...
Would you like one?
I'd like a copy of it. Thank you.
Actually, do you want to give it to?
Yeah.
Would you like one?
I'd like to propose an idea.
Yeah.
Please set up these select board meetings where the audience has tables to sit at.
Yes, what I'm going to suggest for the workshop people is come on down and so you have places to...
Sit on a table with us. Thank you, bro.
Yes, because this is a, this is a joint project, so we should be joined.
When was this stuff created?
This was created within the last couple of weeks.
Jane and Bob, can you, can you guys share this one either? I'm sure.
I think I have one.
Yeah, but I just, I don't have, I don't have one.
I can give out to like this one.
I'm not sure if you have that one.
Oh, yes, okay. I have several ideas here.
Oh, the other thing, the other thing that we should do on the...
So, I'm gonna adjourn this to another end, Ben. Do you want to pause that?
So, we have three separate... Two other events I have to support because we should have committee only.
We have one.
Sure, committee.